Thank you, Cassiata, five-three-four-eight, Hygro Road. And I really only have one comment to make. With this new space, I'm having a hard time getting everybody's voices. Specifically, Ms. Works and Mr. Rumsesel?
Oh.
I'm sorry, didn't say your name right. And because you know why? Because when you talk, you face that way. And with this larger space, it's harder to pick up your voices. So if you can just increase the volume a little bit. And I give the Annunciation Award to Mayor Nowak because apparently everything he says, it comes in so clearly that the word translation is identical. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
We have bills on payable, Ms. Works.
Thank you. Administering Services, Mrs. Pugh.
In order.
Planning and zoning, Mr. Nchetti.
In order.
Public safety, Mr. Vee.
In order.
Public works, Mrs. Iker.
In order.
Recreation, Mr. Sobrowski.
They're in order, but I'll have some questions a little later.
Storm sewer fund, Mrs. Iker.
In order.
Sanitary sewer fund, Mrs. Iker.
In order.
Local fiscal recovery fund, Mrs. Pugh.
In order.
And capital projects fund, Mrs. Pugh.
In order.
Ask for a motion to approve bills on the bill list dated May first, 2024, from the general fund totaling two hundred sixty-four thousand, eight hundred forty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. From the storm sewer fund totaling twenty-eight thousand, five hundred eight dollars and forty-six cents. From the sanitary sewer fund totaling two hundred twenty-one thousand, two hundred twenty-three dollars and thirty cents. From the local fiscal recovery fund totaling one hundred fifty-seven thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars and fifty-six cents. And from the capital projects fund totaling six thousand, ninety-seven dollars and forty-four cents.
So moved.
Motion made second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries unanimously.
But also ask for a motion to ratify checks and transfers from the general fund totaling fourteen thousand, eight hundred thirty-seven dollars and thirty-one cents. And from the payable fund totaling forty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars and three cents for grand total ratification in the amount of sixty-two thousand, five hundred thirty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries unanimously.
I next ask for a motion to approve payroll for the pay for, excuse me, ratify the payroll for the payday of April nineteenth, 2024 in the amount of one hundred sixty-nine thousand, five hundred twenty-two dollars and twenty-four cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries unanimously.
There is an overturn was attached.
Okay, thank you. Next, I ask for a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of April seventeenth, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Mayor Nowak.
Thank you, Madam President. First item I have is the monthly report for April 2024. Police Department responded to seven hundred thirty-one calls for service in April 2024. Specifically, there were one hundred eighty-one EMS assists, seventy-two court hearings pre-trial, twenty-two accidents, thirty criminal arrests, eighty-nine traffic stops, sixty-eight traffic details, forty-eight traffic citations and written warnings, traffic warnings, seventy-five. And those compared to 2023, where some are higher, some are lower. EMS assist was twenty-one more assists than in 2023. Court hearings pre-trial about twenty more. Other than that, they're, you know, it's variable. Monies collected and turned over to the borough during April 2024 totaled six thousand, six hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy-seven. Training activities. Sergeant Mayburn completed a five-day PPCT Defensive Tactics instructor course at the Allegheny County Police Training Academy. Deputy Chief Gable, PPCT. Sorry.
It's a course of government acronym for defensive tactics. So the torn strikes, use of hands, takedowns, things like that.
Investigator newborn and juvenile officer Smith attended a two-day child maltreatment conference hosted by UPMC Child Advocacy Center. And Officer Meyer attended a three-day NTOA Advanced Negotiator Course at the Beaver County Emergency Services Training Center.
I do know what NTOA is.
Okay, I wasn't gonna ask you to tell me what we had to spot.
National Tactical Officers Association.
Community programs. Juvenile Officer Smith participated in Community Heroes Day at McEnally Elementary and Whitehall Elementary. Moving along, on Sunday, I had the privilege of giving remarks at the seventy-fifth anniversary of the Whitehall Community Lions Club. I circulated a proclamation to all members of council. I was also given the opportunity to give some remarks, which I was glad to do. I made sure I called to memory Harold Burkobin, whom I dearly miss. And Harold was a big promoter of the Whitehall Community Lions Club. The, you know, in looking at all the things that the Lions do, both internationally and locally, they have this motto, "We serve." And their whole focus is community activities. And I said this, and I sincerely mean it, that, you know, we are divided throughout our country on so many issues that we really need an organization like the Lions Club whose sole purpose and life, these were created by business persons who said, "We need to have more, we need to have a focus on the community as well as our own businesses." And so they banded together to provide community programs. And of course, Helen Keller challenged them to, let's see, in her words, "Become knights of the blind in the crusade against darkness." So the Lions Club is often associated with a collection of eyeglasses. But I really think that they're bad organization, a service organization focused on the community, probably more important now in our times than when they, you know, than when they were founded. So I would like to give a plug for the Whitehall Lions Club. If you, I was given two applications, if you want, if anybody's interested in joining the Lions Club. And but they, if you can't join, maybe you can give them money. I should also, speaking of a lion, here comes Doris Marston, who's a Whitehall lion, right on cue. I should also indicate that two other lions who stood on our council were also present at the dinner. Linda Bork is a member of the Lions, and so is Beth Lynn Iker, a member of the Lions. And they were both, both present. Chief Gabor was also present at this dinner. So it was a wonderful event. And, you know, I think everyone had a good time. I guess my last item is to indicate that I will be participating in the senior exit interviews for Baldwin High School students. It will actually take place at the new Randall Blunt Elementary School.
Yes.
And I know that Courtney is gonna be there, Chief Gabor is gonna be there, Laura Stristen and Lacey. All right.
Idol two.
You will. So Whitehall Borough will be, elected officials will be well represented at the senior interviews. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Any questions for the mayor? No? Okay, cool, thank you. Solicitor report, Mr. Farman.
Thank you, I do not have a report this evening.
Please for consideration for the following motion, to place the Personnel Policy Manual Amendment Ordinance.
I, so moved.
I would like it read because I wasn't sure what this is, is?
Well, I mean, the motions, the way you do the motions to read it somewhere is what Mr. Sobrowski was mentioning. But if you want a description of the ordinance, it is.
Yes.
It is an ordinance to amend the policy manual. Have you seen it?
You have a copy of it in your pocket. I do? Okay, yes. Yes, I do, so yes, a summary form will be fine. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion. For a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, motion made in second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries unanimously.
Excuse me. An ordinance of the Borough of Whitehall, Allegheny County, Carmelup, Pennsylvania, amended the Whitehall Borough Personnel Policy Manual as most recently amended on August nineteenth, 2024 by ordinance number eleven thirty-eight. As section twelve, work practice and conduct rules, subsection J, employee communications, to clarify that employees are only required to take direction from their direct supervisor or borough manager unless otherwise authorized by formal action of Borough Council.
Okay, thank you. We have the engineers report, Mr. Rumsesel.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a few items for you this evening, all listed in our April twenty-sixth review to council. Under item two, Operation and Maintenance Plan, under the 2023 C.C. Inspection Contract, Roto-Rooter has continued work on that project and is nearing that completion. They have invoiced the Borough under Pay Application Number Five. We review that, it is in order. Recommend the motion as to approve Pay Application Five in the amount of sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty cents for the 2023 CCTV inspections to Roto-Rooter Service Company.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries unanimously.
Under the item two, the 2023 Sanitary Sewer Excavation Repair Contract, Roto-Rooter has submitted a second pay application for that work. That includes the emergency repairs that occurred along Wayman Run. There are five total repairs that occurred there. And then during the storm, I believe, of the twelfth, problems on the Route Fifty-One near the tire center were identified and two repairs were completed there. The repairs on Fifty-One, and there was a sanitary sewer, the fifteen, a sanitary sewer was close blocked. In identifying the block agents, we determined that manholes were covered and paved over in the rear building, so they were located, raised a grade. That allowed access for bypass pumping and the repair was made. So under the 2023 repair contract, the pay application number two has been reviewed, it is in order. The recommended motion is to approve Pay Application Two in the amount of one hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-five cents for the 2023 sanitary sewer excavation repair contract to Roto-Rooter Service Company.
Question?
Yes.
The Wayman Run portion of this, is this, this is in regards to the emergency work? And that we are, sorry, I'm gonna go to a page. This is in regards also connection to number sixteen in the back?
If you would use the first sheet, the 2023 sanitary repair tracking, emergency one through seven is listed there. It would be on.
Sorry, okay.
Yes, to answer your question, yes, I see the end of your report. And then also to borrow off the spreadsheet.
Okay. I was just wondering, because I know that some of this emergency sanitary sewer repair that was needed, we were hopefully going to be reimbursed?
Thirty-seven thousand and change has been submitted to Columbia Gas.
Okay.
That said, this pay application does include that amount.
Okay.
And we're looking for reimbursement from Columbia.
Perfect, thank you for the clarification.
Okay. We have a motion.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Motion made second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries unanimously.
On page two, near the top, the Baptist Road Backwater Vow. Roto-Rooter was the lowest contractor who submitted to complete that work. They have completed the backwater valve installation at Fifty-three Hundred Baptist Road. The recommended motion is to approve Pay Application Number One and Final in the amount of thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars for the Fifty-three Hundred Baptist Road Backwater Vow to Roto-Rooter Service Company.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries unanimously.
Under item four, Overlook Park, contractor there, both Caliber, Ramsey Construction, Hanlon Electric have been taking advantage of this dry weather that we have been having here for the second half of April. I do not have the total.
Next meeting.
And the pairs of Noah is also behind, and they're also a month behind on what April acknowledged. So I will find out for you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
However, the work at the Orchard Hills, the building is under roof. Rough ends have been completed. The underground stormwater tank has been installed and the storm sewer system is nearing completion. Ramsey and Caliber have continued form work regarding the stairs off of Orchard. And this week, they have been forming the sidewalk throughout the play area above, that'll sit above the restroom facility. And a large concrete pour is scheduled for tomorrow, so work is progressing very well there. Under item twelve, the 2024 Payment Maintenance Program, just to make everyone aware, we have received the contract documents from Neely, Neely. I did drop those off with the manager this evening. The next step would be to schedule a pre-construction meeting and then secure their schedule. Under item fifteen, Village Drive, this is the project's been delayed throughout the winter. Solely construction didn't mobilize to the site. I did a drive-by this evening on the way over. Appears all the work has been completed, the driveway has been paved, and the disturbed areas have been re-stored. So.
Right.
That project started late and finished relatively quickly. Any questions for me?
Great.
Yeah, I got a question.
Sure.
And I'm gonna ask this question between the engineer and manager, because I'm not sure, I should direct it towards. The poll, where do we stand on that? The last thing we need is to have anyone lay an opening in this poll.
Nope, everything is underway. We tentatively are going to start draining people on the ninth and tenth. The kids will be here on the eleventh to start their prep, cleaning, putting furniture together, all those little things. We are looking to fill it with fresh water starting the thirteenth. So we'll get all that prepped that week with blue broth for the heating, have our chemical gentleman come in. And then the eighteenth, the kids will do their safety drills, things that they need for their lifeguarding. And water will be all underway for an opening on the twentieth.
We order the cover yet for next year?
Uh, no, not address that.
Okay.
Mr. Vee, we are preparing contract documents for the full cover. We did solicit price quotes to have that manufactured and installed. Both quotes came in over the bid threshold of twenty-two thousand and change. So we'll have to be publicly bid. So we have, we're preparing the specs, and then we've also solicited Ford contractors who manufacture and install so that they can start their process of becoming qualified contractor in the borough.
Will we get a warranty?
Yes, there'll be a warranty with the cover. I don't have that. I guess there will be a warranty.
And last question, I know this is in Borough Road, but I drop it every day, Baptist Road. Is there any feedback on that, or what's going on there?
Yes and no.
Well, no, they said they're getting a warranty.
Yeah, the engineer and I sat in on a phone call with PennDOT last week, late last week. Last Tuesday, thank you, Scott. And they are tentatively planning to do repay the entire stretch of the Betterment Project from Hamilton intersection up by Cool Springs, starting in Bethel there, all the way to Brownsville. Yeah, that's what their plan is, and they've mentioned some storm sewer work as well. But yeah, that's their tentative plans for twenty twenty-six. This is the tentative start.
Some storm sewer work on the right-hand side of the street as you go up from Gasky Village toward Cool Springs now.
We are not certain of the scope of.
Yeah, obviously, we have a position on that, but yes.
I don't need to pass a law, just fix it.
But yes, that is currently in the, I guess, final design phases. There were about twenty people on a phone call, so I'll keep you updated.
What's the, hold on, is it twenty-seventh? We're gonna open the weekend before the work?
No, the twenty-fifth, that Saturday.
Saturday.
Yes, yeah.
Saturday, Memorial Day weekend.
See? I thought we pulled that forward for your background.
Just a question.
Sure.
On item fourteen, the consent order with regards to Alcatzand, there's a line in there that Gateway has submitted a letter of intent for the Alcatzand Road Grant. And then a little later, it said the maximum grant for the manhole to manhole lining project is twenty percent. Is there a rough idea how much that would cost in general? Without the twenty percent, just the whole project?
It could be in excess of a million dollars. We will be reviewing that at the workshop, I believe, on the fifteenth, going over this in detail with council. But yeah, it is a considerable project.
I additionally have a question concerning the pool. Again, like Mr. Vee, I'm not really sure who this is for exactly, but on Tuesday, the twenty-third, I had observed some contractors who were working in the vicinity of the snack bar. I presume that this had everything to do with the turning the water on for the season, but I would like to have some sort of clarification as to what that work was and what it was about.
I can address that. It could have been one of two things. Nicholson is in the process of providing the few remaining items to close out the contract. One of those items was to provide an ass-built of the storm sewer system. And the other, and I believe that is probably what you witnessed on the twenty-third, would have been the televising, the subsurface televising, the CCTV work on the storm sewer system. They have provided that, we are in the process of reviewing those documents.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Scott. The managers report, Ms. Works.
Thank you, Ms. Book. The first item of my report, I hope that everyone has taken notice of the new little libraries at Borough Parks. They're bright blue, can't miss them. Public Works recently took advantage of the nicer weather and did install five of those. And Whitehall Public Library, some have already started depositing starter collections in them. But they are going to be working with local Boy Scout troop, three thirty-eight, will be sponsoring a community book drive to make sure that those are kept stock this summer and going forward. So very exciting news there. Polla did fantastic work securing that funding for us. Next up, Chief Gabor and I recently attended a webinar on the impacts of Act Fifty-Nine. For those of you that aren't familiar with that legislation, it was signed into law in two thousand twenty to provide for municipal police officers who require mental health evaluations under certain conditions. So while a well-intended law, it has some ambiguities that are resulting in some costs to municipalities. So many thanks to the GFLA for putting on this educational seminar. Very eye-opening to the pitfalls of this litigation and where you can kind of fall into some gray area. So very educational, we really enjoyed that. A follow-up to the .gov conversation that we had in the last council meeting, Ms. Regala and I were able to speak with representatives for both Franklin Borough and West Midland. They recently transitioned to the .gov domain themselves. Both indicated that it was a fairly easy process. Their IT was heavily involved, but really seamless transition. They did indicate that it takes quite a bit. It is the federal government. It took them upwards of a year to fully transition to this. So that being said, Alyssa and I did start the process, you know, put in our review process to verify that we are, that we are in fact Whitehall Borough. That request alone is going to take up to thirty days in a minimum. But when I was applying for this, whitehallborough.gov spelled both ways is currently available. So I did indicate both of those. So I don't know if council has a preference on sticking with the B-O-R-O or if you'd like to move to full spelling of Borough.
That will always have to be B-O-R-O.
Right now, but I do.
It's a risk to, you know?
I don't know. So I did note that we were interested in both. And the application was very clear that you weren't committed to that, that that would be a discussion. So when you're back in thirty-plus days, I'll let you know, but.
That we can redirect, that way anybody that searches with the alternate spelling, they're not getting lost or going to the Whitehall community that's across the state, let's.
But that being said, I guess it's a consensus to stick with B-O-R-O. It means URL, yes, as you want to say, but.
Sounds good.
Very good, thank you. I think, yes, so I'll keep you updated on that, but be warned, both municipalities indicated that it just takes a long time. So we'll keep on top of it.
Thank you.
Yeah, not a problem. And then last but not least, this came up recently when I attended the TCC meeting in, well, no, he went to the last one, Steve, right? Mrs. Pugh. They, an updated resolution formally acknowledging our voting delegates to the Allegheny County Southwest Tax Collection Committee is needed. So they have provided a draft resolution that you have before you. I would ask that council read the resolution in its entirety before adopting it this evening.
So moved.
So, is there a second?
Yes.
Motion made second?
To read it in its entirety.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Act Thirty-three of two thousand eight, five oh five B, requires the governing bodies of school districts, townships, boroughs, and cities that impose an earned income tax to appoint one voting delegate and one or more alternate delegates to their Allegheny County Southwest Tax Collection Committee, TCC representatives. The purpose of this resolution is to appoint the required delegates. The appointed individuals have consented to the appointment. Resolved by the governing body of the Borough of Whitehall, Allegheny County, the following individuals are appointed as TCC delegates. One, primary voting delegate, Catherine E. DePuy. Two, first alternate delegate, Courtney M. Worts. Three, second alternate delegate, Alyssa M. Regala. Four, if the primary voting delegate cannot be present for a TCC meeting, the first alternate voting delegate shall be the representative at the TCC meeting. If both the primary voting delegate and the first alternate voting delegate cannot be present for a TCC meeting, the second alternate voting delegate shall be representative at the TCC meeting. These appointments are effective immediately and shall continue until successors are appointed. All delegates shall serve at the pleasure of the governing body and may be removed at any time. Resolved and enacted into law this first day of May, twenty twenty-four. So I now ask for a motion to adopt Resolution Ten Thirty-four.
So moved.
I have a quick question about this. So I understand that we have an elected tax collector. How would the elected tax collector work into this tax collection committee?
This committee regards earned income tax not realistic taxes in charge, how is determined the elected tax collector collects?
Yeah, under the, under the act, I don't know, it's ten years, I don't, you know, it's the state, you know, the joint earned income tax committee is created. Is that right? It was, you know, jointly, so it took all the local collection out of earned income tax and had these areas created to do it. You know, it apparently has been very successful in terms of collections. So the local tax collectors know the standards, the different boroughs, local municipalities, and school districts have their voice by, you know, the delegate to the, to lead the committee.
Okay, I do appreciate that Allegheny County Southwest Tax Collection, I believe that that's the association that currently has the contract under Jordan Tax Services and had formerly done business with Burkeheimer Associates. And I was wondering if this would be the body that would get to decide from time to time whether or not that was a relationship worth continuing or worth bidding out with the understanding that this is somewhat of a collective consensus that all of these boroughs come to?
That community decides that, yes.
Okay.
All right.
I'm leaving a motion, uh, in a second for adoption.
Oh, I made the motion.
Oh, excuse me. So there is a motion for a second.
Second?
A second.
Okay. Don't call Chris Stewart.
Ms. Book?
Yes.
Mrs. Depew?
Yes.
Mrs. Iker?
No.
Mr. Lucetti?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Sobrowski?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Vee?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
That is all that I have.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Schwartz? Okay, we'll move on. Your assistant manager, Ms. Regala. Okay, then. All right. Thank you, and we have our committee reports, administrative services, Mrs. Depew.
Look at it, I was requested by some residents of the South Coast Square, Whitehall residents, that have moved up there. If they could see the magazine, they had missed, they missed seeing the Borough news. So I took five, six copies up and I passed them out to the people that I saw and I left one in their reading room. And, uh, Bill knows, so Dick, and I can never remember his last name.
Dick McDonald, I don't know when he was born.
He, yeah, he got it, he came up to me and he said, "How much? I really like that." So Alyssa, a compliment to you. Pete had a hundred and one, recognized how nice and clear the columns were and what was the difference. And he had a five-minute conversation on it.
He was golfing up until ninety-eight.
He did appreciate it. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Depew? Planning and zoning, Mr. Lucetti?
Yes, um, the next planning and commission meeting is scheduled for May eighth at seven thirty PM in this room. And at that meeting, the commission will continue its work on uses in the borough's commercial districts. The zoning hearing board will meet on May twenty-first. And at that meeting, a decision is expected to be rendered on a variance request by Bernard and Annette Smith of five oh five seven Brownsville Road to permit a pavilion that exceeds one hundred and fifty square feet and twelve feet in height ordinance for code. Um, at the same meeting, the board will also hear, uh, two appeals. First, Baldwin Whitehall School District, uh, Baldwin High School at four six five Cleveland Boulevard. The applicant requests a variance to permit a ten-foot-high chain-link fence along the tennis courts on the subject property. The second is for Leslie Britton of five one two six South Passage Drive. The applicant requests a variance to permit a four-foot-high fence in the front yard on a corner lot of the property. And finally, as of now, there is no need for a planning and zoning committee meeting, which was on the calendar for May ninth, so that will be canceled.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any questions for Tristan? Our library, Ms. Thomas.
Um, I would like to report that I saw one of the little libraries with my kids the other day and we were digging through all the books. Um, took some pictures, very excited about that, so love our little libraries. Yeah, that's all I have, thank you. We will meet our library, the library board next week. That's all I have.
All righty. Recreation, Mr. Sobrowski.
Uh, I did not have anything to report of. There's nobody here for recreation.
I have a couple things. Uh, I just would like to give a huge shout-out to our rep board in general. Um, with Hannah being on leave, they have really stepped up their volunteering efforts. Uh, they ran the entire April Bingo themselves, which is huge. That's no small feat with all those ladies. Um, and a couple gentlemen, I believe. They, they did wonderful. Um, I know the cleanup day with Mayor Nowak, they were really helpful over here in Snyder. You guys left on the bus to go to other parts of the borough. Uh, Steel Kids is coming up, or Kids of Steel, excuse me, is coming up on Saturday. Um, you know, they'll be there in Hannah's absence running that. And they have just offered any help on anything to Alyssa and I, which is really, we really appreciate that, um, you know, as we are short-staffed and have a lot on our plate. So we're very, very grateful and I just wanted to shout out all those fantastic volunteers for what they've been doing for us.
And councils, thanks for that. Appreciate it.
And I know we have the recognition dinner coming up, but case for this, we've been really just rock star lately.
Much appreciated. Okay, next is Public Works, Mrs. Iker.
Can I, uh, follow up, um, from the room and, and what? I was gonna say this at the end, but, um, I, and I should have said it during my, uh, my, uh, when I gave my report. But, uh, birthday was a, a very, uh, successful day. So we had, uh, the chief counted, I didn't count, but the chief, uh, Chief Gaborik was there and he counted, uh, forty-two people. Uh, so that's, you know, one of the largest co- crowds that we had. And I'd like to give, again, a shout-out, uh, and everyone help me if I miss an organization. So Cub, Cub Scout Pack two eighty, they were there, right?
Eighty-eight, two eighty-eight.
Yeah, two eighty-eight, yeah. The, uh, National Honor Society, we had five members from the National Honor Society. And that was primarily, uh, the work of Brendan Harris, uh, who, um, uh, who was part of the Whitehall Committee for Environmental Action. And I don't think he would mind me saying this with pride, but Brendan Harris is gonna be going to the University of Notre Dame and the Fall. So, uh, uh, and then there were Shim students, or at least about, uh, ten, ten or so, uh, Shim students. Susie Backshider was, uh, there, uh, responsible. Whitehall Democratic Committee sent several, uh, representatives. Uh, the Whitehall Committee for Environmental Action sent several, uh, people. The Whitehall Recreation Board and Joe, Joe, take, stand up and take a mile for all of those groups. So, uh, we, you know, really appreciate, did I miss anybody? Did anybody, no, you're missing, okay, thank you. I don't wanna miss anybody, but. Uh, uh, and thank you, uh, for those bulletin bites, 'cause you, you did get out, uh, word about the success of them. So, thank you, that's all I have.
I did wanna add one thing with PAC two eighty-eight. Um, I actually gave them a challenge, 'cause last year I cleaned up around the tennis court with my wife and son. We found sixty-three tennis balls and I said, "Can you beat that?" And they did, they found sixty-eight. We went over to Snyder, uh, last time and we found thirty baseballs, so that's the challenge.
My two golf balls don't look good.
That's great, thank you. Okay, Mrs. Iker, Public Works?
Um, uh, before I start, I wanted to clarify my voting. No, it wasn't out of any disrespect of a- anyone who was nominated for that position. I, I hold you in the highest regards. It's due to my dis taste specific to, to Jordan Tax Services. And so I will, will protest the use of any opportunity that I can because Berkhymmers did such a superior job. Thank you. Um, so there was, um, a, a public works presence at the Earth Day in which I did break my silence between myself and the Public Works staff just as a, a matter of somebody who was also volunteering and asking for a matter of supplies when a, um, conversation broke out concerning the trash cans. So, um, Mr. Lucetti, I don't know if you were, um, present when there was a trash can that was recovered from over the hill?
No, I didn't.
Side, uh, behind the tennis courts?
No, I didn't.
So, um, I, I was informed by, um, the, the Public Works, eh, laborer who was, um, assisting with the greater municipal complex, let's just call it, that there was a single trash can that had fallen over the hillside and had therefore become litter because the, the trash can itself had holes in the bottom. It was no way to, to be put back into service. Continuing to state my claim that we should revisit the idea of trash cans in our parks to be, um, revisited as a, a matter of having it as a permanent fixture rather than a, um, eh, can that may blow away or perhaps need to be replaced from time to time. And given that there are some fronts still left in buildings and grounds, it could be possibly accomplished through that or processibly accomplished through the, the work that, um, Mayor Nowak and, um, the Environmental Action Committee will do to, to continue to, to pursue other options concerning that. But I, I would like to, to see that continue. And I would also like to see, continue some interest in possibly piloting the, um, recycling efforts as a high-impact, low-cost sort of effort. What I mean by high-impact, low-cost is that you can set up temporary recycle bins that are labeled for their precise touch points and where we would know whether or not we would have plastic bottles or aluminum cans or both at the function and do it as a function thing rather than as an everything thing. And instead of, eh, assuming that you would get the, um, the recycling done, uh, all the time, every time, eh, in every parks. That, that would be somewhat of an ambitious, um, call without eh, an initial pilot. It would be a bit much to already ask the wonderful volunteers of the Recreation Committee, Mr. Sobrowski, to, to do, go ahead and do that. So I would like to, to continue on with the, the efforts to see if I, myself or others might be interested in volunteering on setting up ad hoc recycling bins for special events where it makes sense.
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in complete agreement with what Beth said. Uh, Beth and I sat next to each other at the, uh, Whitehall Community Lions Club, uh, uh, dinner and luncheon. And we talked a little bit about that. I know one of your, one of the concerns that came up at the Parks Committee, I don't know if you're gonna bring this up, Kathy, was, you know, what do our, what do our, uh, you know, what kind of work is this gonna be for our employees? And so one of the things that Beth and I talked about was possibly having a, you know, buy can, put it, you know, in a park. Let's see what kind of usage it gets. Let's see what kind of, uh, work is required by our Public Works employees. And then, uh, once we, we would learn from that experience and then we could go out and buy, uh, you know, buy more cans for other parks. Uh, I, uh, you know, and I, I can tell you that the Whitehall Committee for Environmental Action is gonna, you know, continue to look, uh, Mrs. Depew again. I don't wanna steer you thundercats to really talk about this, but, uh, she sees the, these cans as being expensive. I think, uh, I'm, I wanna look at Co-Stars and, uh, and some other, uh, and, and take a look and see what other boroughs have paid. But I, I think that we not only can do this, but we should do this in all of our parks. We should have, uh, a trash can that, um, you know, looks presentable and a recycling container alongside it to recycle items that are typically used in a park. Um, you know, cans and, and, uh, uh, bottles. And that's being recycled by our hauler, Waste Management. So we should be able to find a way to get it from those recycling containers to waste management. So I would just like to, uh, add my support to that agreement.
Fantastic.
Level up on that. You and I did talk briefly at the, uh, Parks Committee meeting about doing this. The information Tricia gave me was the, the cans that she saw were between seven hundred and a thousand dollars per can. Contacted Mount Lebanon, they, they paid seventeen hundred per can. Contacted, uh, West Mifflin, they paid, or I'm sorry, Cranberry, they paid fifteen hundred per can. I, I just saw faces. I mean, that's just an incredible amount. I would like to suggest that your group, the Environmental Committee, look into buying one or two cans. Two, hopefully, one for trash and one for recycling, and put them in a park on an experimental basis. Let's try it. I'm willing to try it and then see what we get.
Using the borough bikes?
No, 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 I'd use the borough, fine.
Crazy, crazy money. Well, whatever.
There you go, Mayor Nowak.
That was just an incredible amount to us residents today.
All right, well, I'm, I'm up to the challenge.
Yes, and, and one of the, the ideas that we did bounce off each other is there, there might be an opportunity for a sponsoring plaque, because this is not unheard of. And that's what, um, Brentwood Borough does along the main drag of Brownsville Road for, um, really all, all of the visitors. And it, it's something that is attributed to the, um, Chamber of Commerce. So it is possible to, to get some donations to make this happen.
All right, um, I'll go for, I'll take the challenge.
Fantastic, thank you. Um, eh, to, to get back to the, the Public Works report, I did, uh, observe on another occasion, um, Public Works doing a good job at, um, emptying the trash cans from the parks. What, eh, the workflow is, eh, actually, I feel that it takes more time than it should due to the fact that the trash cans are not lined. Um, it is a sanitary reason for the people who are, eh, laborers, eh, to have to be physically handling the trash, making sure that the, the bins are completely eh, empty into a, a larger bin that then goes back to the municipal dumpster, which is, eh, is the total workflow. So, I, I will ask again, please, can we please consider, eh, the lining of the trash bins in our park to be a supply of Public Works?
Well, I would caution against that. I might, you, you wanna try it on an experimental park, but it's so easy to pull a plastic liner out of can. And I'm sorry, but children just think it's kind of a neat thing to do. And I can see trash all over the park. And that's one of the reasons I think we have just a single rubber can that actually is chained down in most places because it's not gonna destroy, not that the kids are out there to be nasty, but they're out there to have fun. And what they think of as fun is not necessarily what I think is fun. And they just do things.
I guess that's something to think about.
Yeah, it is something we can talk about, but it is, there's two sides to it.
Maybe what you can do is talk to municipalities, if you're lining a can, and see if that ever has a problem. 'Cause, um, I can, if I were a kid, I can think of a lot more fun things to do than to take drivers out of the park.
Eh, yeah, yes, um, eh, now, we were discussing last time the re-use of, I, I suppose you would say, the, the waste material from the asphalting of the, the roadside, um, project, or, or the road project. Um, so we had come to a consensus that we had a certain priority. However, um, a- another idea as to go, how to go ahead and use that, that waste material would, um, be appropriate. So, um, the pickleball court at Snyder Park has come to my attention that it has slight cracks and is not appropriate to put what is called conventionally a cold patch over it like you do for a, a pothole in the street, because then the surfacing would become completely uneven, which is the exact, eh, type of situation that we were trying to, to prevent by, um, doing something about, about it. So, given that we do not want to spend a lot of money on Snyder Park with the idea that Snyder Park might just be our next big capital project concerning, um, the parks. But what about if we happen to have asphalt for, um, one of the days that we are doing the, the road work this summer? Can we perhaps, eh, utilize that amount of waste? You know what? It is actually environmentally good to, to go ahead and reuse the waste rather than dump it to, to go ahead and re-resurface the, the pickleball court? Or perhaps there might be other opportunities around the borough and on, um, borough grounds that it would be appropriate. Um, so, so. So Scott, can you, you tell me approximately how many days the, the road project would be ongoing because I know that you would say that it's to be determined as to the start date, but we do have a firm deadline.
Yes, you do have a firm deadline. I don't wanna speak on behalf of Millian Lee. Historically, they have completed the project the last two years, I believe, in, in three to four weeks. It's sequenced, so they sequence, they have to do curb work, storm sewer, storm inlet work that would be included in the project. That typically has the longest lead time just because it's labor intensive. When that work is completed, then they bring in a milling machine to mill the asphalt and then prepare the road for paving. Then followed by that crew would be the binder crew to first lift the asphalt that goes down, followed by the wearing course. So they need to prepare that and then we will ask for that at the pre-construction meeting and then we'll know for certainty. I do know the contractor has work, other work in the South Hills, so they try to coordinate things so everything falls into place and then the crews can stay in the localized area. So there's a lot of things up in the air.
Okay.
But as a guesstimate, say a month.
So what I would like to know is, as a guesstimate, how much asphalt would the, the gully, let's just call it, on, that reaches down to Curry Drive, how much would that take?
Fifty pounds.
Like how many days? Fifty pounds? So how many pounds are in typical?
I want my sun pump replaced. I think the borough should pay for that. If we're gonna put asphalt on private property, then I think we should, because my sun pump pumps water that runs off of other properties. Things on private property.
The issue with regards to the, 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 the guesstimate property, the issue with that is that the borough at one point did work there.
But does that mean we should continue to do it?
Yes, legally obligated to him, so.
Okay, then I think the borough did some work on that. I can agree with it.
I'm just telling you, that's the standard and that's the, that's the issue. So it's not, but just to be perfectly clear, you're correct, you cannot spend borough money on private property for a private project. Yeah, it's, you cannot do that, but that's not what this is, it's not the interpretation. I just wanted, I wanna make sure you're not spending, that was not the legal interpretation.
Yeah, and I would like, I would like to add that. Borough has a responsibility of getting rid of school water on, on the parks. This is just assisting in a borough function. All of our properties have storm sewers underneath that. That are all, that are all owned by, that are all owned by, that are owned by the, by the borough and they're on, they're on all of our properties. So the idea that just because it's on somebody else's property, that's not the issue. The issue is, is this a government function to get rid of storm water from a street up above? This is a street up above where all the, all the water is draining down. It needs to go, it needs to go somewhere and we need to assist in that.
All the houses on one side of Brownsville Road have the same problem. Water runs off of Brownsville down through their yards.
I'm sort of the impression that that was not private property. I thought that was a.
Well, it would be, okay, an easement, you would call it an easement, which is the right of someone to use someone else's property. Okay, so, or if you can correct me from home, we, we all own our property to the street, you know, to the middle of the street, subject to the right of government to, you know, to have a road down the middle, that's part of the easement. So, so property is always owned. The government doesn't own the road. The government has the right to, you know, to put a road in a place where, you know, we all own to the middle of the street.
It, it really depends, man. That property ownership can be quite different relative to different streets. Sometimes it's a right of way that the borough owns and there is no ownership interest by the individual property owner. Sometimes, you know, it's, it's, it's an easement over property. There's any number of ways. There's even more than I'm speaking, there's, there's a lot of different ways on the ownerships. I don't wanna, your description is right sometimes, but not all.
Well, this is a lot of discussion, but we could do this for a while, but let's move forward.
Well, that was at the end of my report. So, and I was asking important questions here. So it was, it's fifty pounds, approximately how many days?
Just to be clear, the fifty pounds is to patch the swale that has stalled. So how many days you're talking then?
Okay, all right, so that, that would be one, okay, not even one. So I presume that with the roadwork, which happens to be part of the Public Works budget, even if it's not executed by Public Works, this is part of the Public Works budget, folks. I would presume that there would be more days where there were waste products perhaps that would be able to, to cover the, the pickleball court.
No, I, I don't believe so.
What about?
So the contract, the contract is publicly bid. So the contractor determines, determines the, or I'm sorry, the contract determines the quantity and the tonnage of the asphalt that would be needed in the project. So it's publicly bid, it's competitively bid. So contractors typically do not overestimate on their daily application of that asphalt. The situation arises on occasion where it might be a ton or a half a ton. Anything more than that would be, certainly would be an oversight on the paving form and the way you order.
Okay.
They don't have that kind of a waste. Whereas the cleanup, the fifty pounds of, I mentioned, that's two shovel holes, more or less.
Okay.
That's typical of what you would have left over in the paper or on equipment.
Okay, so, yes.
So they keep, they run very tight margins. It's not a situation where they have the flexibility to have a ten percent waste a day.
Yes, yes.
You're talking about decimal points on percentage of waste at the end of the project.
Well, well, that, that's actually quite green of them, so I'm glad that that is the case then. So I tried, I wanted to, to see if there was any way to very affordably do something about that pickleball court. And I do respect that we did vote for the listing of the, I'm sorry, the listing of the Public Works specific to the streets and the orders of the street. However, it had come to my attention that it was not in fact a consensus order of the Public Works. Be that as it may, we, we've already voted on it and I had, at the time, asked for a confirmation in email specific to, okay, can somebody from Public Works Department please, pretty please confirm for me that this was indeed the priority list that was come to consensus on? And that's exactly what kicked off this whole conversation of, well, then we, we shouldn't have anybody talk to, to staff whatsoever. It wasn't a direction, with my understanding of the ordinance now, as drafted for public display, we, we have the ability to, of course, suggest things and have conversations with the staff, but actually ordering, I respect that that would be beyond the authority of any one council person to make. So I would respectfully suggest that while I had done everything that I could possibly do concerning the obedience to basically a gentleman's agreement concerning the, oh, we shouldn't be talking to staff for, for any reason, I, I don't think that that is necessarily appropriate, especially since we, we have this particular disconnect. We had citizens who were reaching out.
We have, we have the manager who you communicate with and our engineer has all that information. I mean, this is, so this is what our policy is.
Yes, and I was, yes, I was told something and I, and it was actually not factual.
Well, okay, we're gonna move on. You've done a quick point.
So.
We have to move on with that. That's public safety, Mr. V.
Public safety, yes, yes, yes. Chief reports Sergeant Budd working with Hillside Meadows Property Manager to identify and remove abandoned, junked and inoperable vehicles left on their property. There's twenty-four violations.
Wow.
And they've been issued to the, for the vehicles that remain in parking lots. It's got a, so what, the alternative, tow them out of town?
Yeah, they, it's a process, it's somewhat of a process. You have to send certified letters to the owner of those vehicles through means and then they have an opportunity to respond, either get them out of there or then ultimately Hillside Meadows would be responsible to tow them out of the property.
So if, if a vehicle doesn't have an updated sticker on it?
Whether it's the registration or inspection or PA.
That will fall into this list. How many up there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're worried by garbage cats, we're worried by these cars. I mean, that's pretty big. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Mr. V. Parks, this is the Q. We did have a meeting with the Director of Tillitson School. Tillitson School borders on Highland, Island Park. And they use the park for their recreation, for their physical education classes. And she had come across some information about playground equipment designed specifically for children with special needs. It's very interesting, it's very interesting equipment. She would like to know if, you know, we put it into the park if we could. She left us some information, we have some grants we could look into, we were actually gonna go down and check the physical space, we could have, fifty-five feet would fit. It was hard for us to envision how much fifty-five feet.
Yes and no.
It was. But okay, anyway, that's where we were headed. They did not offer to pay for any of the equipment. On the other hand, they didn't say they wouldn't. So it's something I think we need to look into, to put into our park plan. It's very intriguing and would make Highlands kind of a destination park for some families or groups because Highlands is a park that I think people forget about a lot of times in the borough. So that, that's on our agenda, on our list. Look to see if we can find some grants. The second thing I'd like to ask is.
Great, before we move off that, I, I had a different interpretation. My interpretation of what she had to say was that they, they would put in money. The question is, you know, what amount? And I, you know, I don't think that they, you know, they know how much and I think that, that it's open for discussion. So that's why I think it's, it's a project that we should give some priority to because they're willing, okay, we can ask.
You're stealing my next step.
Okay, go ahead. All right, well, you moved, I thought you moved on from the.
No, she had a next point.
All right, I don't wanna steal your next step.
Let's put these things in some kind of order.
All right.
We have a suggestion there. People at Union have asked that we put, we move playground equipment up near the ball field. It's playground equipment for the younger children. That other area, should we put in a basketball court, bigger playground equipment, a football court? Or should our next project be complete overhaul? Or should we say the heck with all of these, we're gonna do something with Snyder right now? So would all of council please, before the next meeting, write down the order that you would like? Number one, what you would do first? I'm not saying we'll stick to it. If someone gives us a big grant for something, yes, we're gonna jump in and, and work on that project, but at least to get an idea of what, what you would see, like to see done first, second, third, and then I'll calculate them all together. That's all I know.
Can I have a quick, can I have a quick question on Highlands real fast?
Certainly.
The updated special needs playground or equipment that would be better suited for children with special needs, would that be in replacement of anything that's there or would that be in addition to?
We haven't decided that.
Okay, I didn't know if there was enough space.
My guess is replacement because of state.
This is the Q, I would say, I think they were talking about replacement.
Okay.
If we don't want to take anything from the soccer field and the baseball fields.
Right, because that's just equipment.
Mr. Harris, we can go out today and we, you know, rough measure, find out the extension years. And we're the footprint of the current, you know, very small playset for, for the young kiddos. Between, it sits between the, the baseball field where the bleacher is and then there's an existing pavilion. You can fit the footprint that they gave us in there. How close it is to the other items certainly is a conversation to have, but there's space there based on our rough measurements that you could do it there. That is really, we walked the whole property, that's really probably the best, most suitable location at that park. But I think it certainly opens up a conversation of, then the pavilion and you have some excess green space, you obviously would want to talk to the soccer association and baseball association because you may have to move the one bleacher set, like I said, it fits, but it's rather close. Same thing on the other end of the pavilion and then depending on how far you push it out, you're coming close to the soccer field. So I would certainly want to address whether, I don't know soccer, so I don't know what the, the safe spaces between, you know, a structure in the end of their field is. But it's certainly worth a discussion and I think there's a lot to discuss there. But based on our recommendations, yes, we could fit something there.
Yeah, firing the look.
Just to follow up on Mrs. Pugh's request, as a member of the committee, I'd just like to articulate that we had a five-year plan. That five-year plan has now come to the end, okay? So we're starting out with another five-year plan and I'm looking at this, Kathy, as council gives the priorities, we will then, as a Parks Committee, go over those priorities and come up with another five-year plan that will be recommended to council. So you're asking for their input into that five-year plan that will, that will be undertaken by, in a lot of what we pursue, even though you might think that something is a priority, we might be able to get a grant for something sooner which would, which would accelerate that particular park. And as I said, it's my belief that the Tillitson School does want to partner with us and they would like to, I'm sure they would like to see this happen before the fall. When the school goes back into session, I don't know if we can do that by then, but you know, I, I would think that they would want, we can.
Well, to follow up what you said as far as the grant cycle, certainly having a priority list and projects on deck is really helpful from a staff perspective because you have to remember the DCR, for example, we've been very successful with that. It's almost a two-year process between, you know, you first formulate and identify a project, apply for it, the money comes in, then you bid it, and you know, two years later you're starting to construction. So if you can, you know, start a project, be constructing one, applying for another, you know, that's really helpful to kind of know where your priorities are. We're always looking, I have a calendar of grants that, you know, I think are maybe eligible for depending on where your priorities lie. So there's options out there, but you do have to think two, three years ahead to really kind of keep momentum going. So that would be my suggestion from the staff perspective.
And do remember, there's one set of steps that overlook that are still regarded in poor condition hands for sure.
Thanks, Kathy.
You're welcome.
A lot of good. Can I make a comment?
Yes, please, go ahead.
We're doing all this here more so for the children and that is fine, but it's been a long time since we've done anything for the seniors, well, the pool is for seniors as well. But pickleball courts aren't that expensive compared to a lot of these parks.
That's part of the conversation.
You're right, I left that out.
Yeah.
You are right, if there's any evidence of that drive by Millennium Park, pickleball, 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 all the way down. They understand Judy exactly what you're, what you're talking about.
Yes.
All the things we're still here.
All right, so we'll move on to our delegate reports and first is Allegheny County Boroughs Association, which I'm on the board, and there's no report right now because our next um meeting is in June. And next is the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs. And I'll be attending the annual conference that has me on the, I'm on the policy and resolutions. So June second, we'll be reviewing all the um resolutions that are up and the ones that are still pending up there in the legislature. So that's one of the most important things that P S A B does is in support of their members. And next is our Chamber of Commerce, Mr. V.
No, I, no, I was not there.
I reported, yeah, not to interject.
I didn't know I had to do these things.
Um, the sixty-fifth anniversary luncheon is actually tomorrow, so I will be attending that um at the South Hills Country Club. They are going to have a lot of their past presidents along with State Representatives Jessica Benham and Nick Fisca Tana. They'll be delivering proclamations. Sorry, I'm reading the email. Um they are looking for a board, a new board member, if there's anyone interested, reach out to the chamber directly. The annual Route Fifty-One Corridor, Corridor Golf Outing will be held on Monday, September sixteenth at the South Hills Country Club. And the next coffee talk will be Tuesday, May twenty-first at the Baldwin Library.
Okay, thank you.
Go down, thank you.
Uh next is our Merza Board of Directors, Mr. Pugh.
Yes, um nothing big to update, uh the executive director is still only about a month in and working hard to um get better understanding of the business side of the organization. Uh he's working hard to find efficiencies to make Merza better going forward, so I'm looking forward to that. Um as mentioned in the last meeting, I wanted to start providing monthly updates on how Merza is working for us in Whitehall. Um something similar to what the mayor does with the police department and what Mr. Skip Brown does with the Whitehall Fire Company. Um so these are just very general stats just for this past month, I hope to get more interesting stats hopefully in the future. But in the month of March, eight hundred sixty-five calls were made by, responded to by Merza. And of those eight hundred sixty-five, two hundred and forty were here in Whitehall, which is about a third of all of the calls. So just showing the importance of Merza in our community.
Thank you. Good information. She called, Mr. V.
Uh no, I did attend this meeting. Uh meeting then on the eighteenth, I did pass the information on to Courtney, there was a, a lady there that literally sounded like she'd given money away. And I don't know if that comes to fruition or not, but uh but she said, what's your borough name, just write it down and we, we got grant money for everything. So I don't know how far that's gonna go.
I have reached out, hoping to connect them with this effect, so I'll let you know.
Good, 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 okay. And uh, um SIR team, uh they are uh equipping all the, the forty, forty-five, forty-five uh members of the SIR team. And they got a grant of seventy thousand dollars from the Allegheny County, they came to, gotta give credit to the Councilman Sam DeMarco. Uh and that pays for half the body cameras. And the other half, I'm not sure where that money's coming from, I think we're talking about that. But uh obviously with the state of the world today, uh we can't be too safe with these officers. And uh the good news, I guess, from the, from the police test, twenty-three actually signed up. I think last time I gave this report, I don't know if you've seen what it was, I don't know how many signed up, I don't know how many showed up, but.
It's coming up.
Is it?
Yeah, it's not, they, they, the applications were due the other day.
Okay.
The test I think is next week.
So it
We're not both.
I know we're not, but there's more than twenty-three now?
No, there's just twenty-three.
Oh, just twenty.
I think the last time they tested, there was twenty or twenty-one, so they got a couple more.
Okay.
But there's seven departments, I think, trying to hire officers off that.
Okay. And uh from the social event, uh July eighteenth is at Lyndon Wood, Shekall sponsors their event. And October the seventeenth, which is especially for the new members on council, that's a great event at that Neville Wood. And it's their annual meeting and uh I recommend you try to make that if you can, that's October seventeenth. And uh I think that's kind of it. Yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. V. Under new business, anyone have any new business to bring up?
I do. Um as we know, the primary election just happened and I was going through my borough directory. Is the constable of elections in? I don't know if I have an old directory, does anybody have?
I don't know. Uh I was issued a um, a borough directory that was for, I presume, the elected officials upon swearing in. And what it did contain was the, the, a page that you're specifying here with the um, the elected officials, uh including you, Mr. Mayor and the mayor and the people of council. And um Judge Barton was there as our magistrate. However, it, it was um a situation where it said constable and then it said vacant. Now, a, a constable can i- enforce the peace rather than enforce the law. So some people do not know that distinction, but there are um some definite reasons why you invoke the, the constable who then will continue to, to deputize uh constables to, to work for the, the primary election day, which uh in conjunction with their election judges has the ability to discern whether or not a um yard sign or any other politicking infringes too close to the, the polls. And um it, that, it was a miss that it was Victoria Schmutzer, who is our, our constable of Whitehall Borough. And I, I believe that it should be appropriately updated to, to reflect that. But it, it, what also this directory contains is staff numbers of people that apparently um are inappropriate to, to contact in my function as a council member and as all of our um functions as council members.
Well, that's informative, the information for everybody.
Uh, yes, yes, so.
You're getting a point to the question that you said, so let's just want to, you could contact the election group.
There's a guy in the criminal division named Gary, who is the manager of the constables.
Okay.
I'm not sure of his last name, but I did speak to him.
Okay, Jane, we, we have to move on here, but thank you for the information. And I have one thing I want to um request council. I'm asking for a motion to place on our next meeting agenda to cancel the July third meeting because um that's the Fourth of July week, obviously. And a long time ago, we did that because we didn't have a forum. I will not be here and uh so I'm suggesting that we put this on the um agenda for next uh May fifteenth meeting to discuss, to cancel July third. So we have any motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion made in second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Okay, so.
Hopefully, nobody planned a vacation around that.
Okay, so, have a motion to adjourn?
Um, hold on, I do have more business. Um so I, I will be also likewise canceling the um May twenty-eighth Public Works Public Meeting uh because it is so close to Memorial Day. But I plan on holding a Public Works Public Meeting at the, the standing time of June twenty-fifth at five P M.
Okay, thank you for the information.
Okay.
So your motion for adjournment?
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everybody, motion.